Hey Sam, can you rotate that screen a little bit?
No, Tom, that's okay.
Recording in progress.
Thank you for joining us, everybody. Happy New Year. This is January 9th, 2024, and our first 2024 Millbrae City Council special meeting. And we'll start with calling this meeting to order at 5:34 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Snyder.
Present.
Councilmember Patton.
Hello, City Clerk.
Hello. Councilwoman Patton, please.
Here.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Here.
Mayor Fang.
Here.
All members of City Council are present.
And for those who are able, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance if you're able to stand. Thank you.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as it is.
Okay, so today we'll start with our study session, and it's the designed charrette of the El Camino Real and Millbrae Avenue Landscaping Median Improvement Project. City Manager, Tom Williams, would you please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you and City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. As you had mentioned, Mayor, this is the second meeting-designed charrette for the median landscape improvements along El Camino Real. So this evening, I will introduce Mr. Sam Batista, our Director of Public Works and Engineering, to introduce the team from NCE. And this is really a, you know, roll up our sleeves. I think that tonight's presentation, you'll have an opportunity to come down and do some drawings and imaging and visioning as part of tonight's design charrette and study session. So without any further ado, I'd like to welcome Mr. Sam Batista, our Director of Engineering and Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. Tonight, we do have this very interactive presentation for you tonight. As of the last meeting, NCE got down to working on these medians, and they're going to present their findings, as well as, you know, just participate with you. And we want to get your direction, your comments, put it all on this map that you see before you, and then they can start designing. So we really want to get your participation, your comments, tonight. And with that, I'm just going to be really short, because we have an hour and a half to get as many of your important and meaningful comments for our designs. So with that, I have Matt Gaber from NCE, as well as Charles de Villiers, and they're here. And I'm going to present Charles to the podium.
Good evening, Council Members. Yeah, so getting started for on our design charrette here, just wanted to recap some of the things that we heard from you guys at our last meeting a couple months ago. So we can go to the next slide there. I think first and foremost, we heard that there's a strong desire to do it right. There's also was an interest in sustainability, and this idea of transitioning the soil into something that will thrive in line with doing things right. In terms of some of the kind of objects there, there was expressed to use the medians to create a canopy, a preference for evergreen trees, the ability that trees have to block noise, using pedestrian barriers to prevent jaywalking, and then possibly exploring pedestrian refuges. One of the council members brought up the kind of informal motto that Millbrae is the city of festivals, and how lighting and decor can be leveraged during the holidays. We want to explore new, classier signage, public art potentially at the gateways, and then the pedestrian barrier is an opportunity for artistic exploration. Next slide, please. These were just kind of some of the early ideas of direction that we presented to you guys, looking at the linear form, naturalistic or fluid. And on the next slide, that is what seems to be a kind of a general consensus, bringing in some of the naturalistic forms, but going with this kind of fluid movement throughout the median. Next slide. Since our last meeting, we were out potholing, looking to see what we are actually working with. We found there's significant variations in the curb depths and physical features, so the contractors will need to pothole prior to construction. Next slide. We were able to obtain soil samples, and the findings were that there is contamination of heavy metals, so approximately the top 12 inches of all the medians will need to be removed. And just looking at the roads and section here, the flow of water goes towards the perimeters, and so just kind of showing how the medians are not ideal for the bioswales. And so, you know, there are other sustainable approaches we can, that might be more suitable for these areas. Next slide. We created a toolkit, just kind of some measures that we can bring into the designs here, looking at the tree canopy, the plant materials, the movement of the form, even looking at how we can play with the ground plane to create interest, and also for practical purposes as well. Next slide. Some of the considerations, you have those in your handouts there that you can read in greater detail. Next slide. We've been working with our arborists to compile a list of tree species for the medians that would be appropriate for those locations. So this is just an example of a few of the trees here that, you know, may be able to be put into these locations. Next slide. Matthew will talk a little bit about the design concepts.
Charles was speaking of, oh, sorry, that would help when that, thank you and good evening. So building upon what Charles was talking about, we took things to the next level, and you can also see it on the boards there, but what forms do we use? And we talked about fluid last time, and what we wanted to do now is we're giving you some really concrete examples of what fluid represents with all of these images. There's some very practical ones in the middle top, you can see. Concrete is used to do that. It moves, it's different shapes, it's kind of curve linear, and there's different textures to it. The lighting can be used to reinforce that fluid motion, and then the tree canopy. Next, please. Another element that's going to be really important is the vertical. So it's not just the plant material we have to play with, based on what Charles was talking about, the design, the toolkit. We have vertical elements such as these barriers, screens, art features, which can be used to help direct the pedestrians. When we were out there, we saw people walking right down the middle of the median, so providing, really thinking about pedestrian safety, and there's a lot of ways we can do it. We can do it with some very functional elements, as you'll see over there, or this could be a real design opportunity, and builds upon that whole idea of fluid. Next, please. Sculptures too, and the ones that we really want to emphasize here is once again that notion of scale. And I highly encourage you to come over and check out these plans and get a sense of how long this is, and how skinny the medians are, and then what an impact having vertical elements can really have, and scaling down the character of the street. Right now, it's, you know, you really don't have a sense of scale, and that could be a really important element that we could work with, the sculptures. Next, please. I'm going to switch back to Charles, because this is his brainchild right here. He did some really wonderful research on Millbrae, and these will talk about the inspirations for our designs.
For the first inspiration, we have this idea from sound to music. One of the things that had been talked about a bit at the last meeting was the issue of noise, and how that is something that, you know, we'd like to have blocked as much as possible, and just this idea of, you know, taking the sound and then concept, you know, the music, and also this informal motto of the city of festivals, you know, that that's something that can be lively and kind of works with that flow sort of geometry that people seem to be drawn to. On the second inspiration there, this idea of disruption, and that Millbrae is a statement. It's something that when you're driving along El Camino, you know that you are in a different location, and this sense of place, and, you know, so these kind of strong, bold features, and something that is very uniquely Millbrae. The third inspiration, part of the kind of reason for this one, actually, as a, growing up in the South Bay, all I knew Millbrae for was as this transportation hub. And so a number of people, we would drive up to Millbrae, we'd park, and then take Bart up to the city, and that was all I knew of Millbrae for a while. Subsequently, I've found out there's a good bit more here too, but there is certainly this strong identity with travel and movement, and, you know, and there's kind of a flow and an energy to that as well. So this idea that Millbrae's a hub, that people come here, and for some people, this is going to be their first impression of California. Then on the fourth inspiration there, this idea of migration, and it kind of builds off of the idea of the hub, but really looking at that movement, looking at some of the diversity of people, of culture, and also the migration of not just people, but ideas in the, you know, connection of the Silicon Valley and San Francisco, and it's in this really vital corridor here. So those are kind of four of the guiding inspirations that we can take into the concept development, which Matthew will talk to you a little bit here.
So what we did then is we went from the 30,000-foot down to the nitty-gritty, and what we've developed ties into the toolkit, just what is the baseline design that we're going to do for you. Couple of assumptions that we're going to make, and a lot of this is just based on our research and the input we received from our, the arborists. Number one is that all the trees are going to be removed, and the reason for removing them is because the trees are mature. A lot of them are struggling, they're the wrong trees for this environment, like the redwood trees, for example, are really struggling. They want to be up in the hills where they're getting the fog drip, different soil types, and there's also very constrained spaces for those trees to grow in. We saw those pictures of us out there digging, we were pitchforks and shovels, and it took us, you know, an hour to get through the soil in a lot of places, and because the soil is just, it's really heavily compacted, it doesn't have any organic matter in it, and also when you build a road, they engineer all the base for that. So there's not nice, original soil underneath the road. It's all been engineered, it's full of rock, and we were actually digging through rock. So the first assumption is that trees will be replaced. The second is all the irrigation is going to be replaced too. A lot of it's outdated, it's broken, and that's typical for a renovation project like this, is that the irrigation, it's just not worth salvaging it. Take it back to what's called the point of connection, and then you put in new irrigation, and the new irrigation is all going to be drip, very low water use, and that also gets into the selection of plant species that with the right type of plants, you'll actually need very little water. Most natives don't even want to be irrigated, so there's, we're going to look at that real closely too. The existing lighting, we're out there digging, there's a lot of old uplights out there and wire out there, and there's nothing we can really work with anymore on that, so that will have to be replaced too. The soil needs to be remediated, as Charles was mentioning, the top 12 inches is contaminated with lead, which is very common, and so that will need to be removed. And that's usually the basic trying to do, type of remediation in place is extremely expensive, and so that's going to have to be. Another is that we'll just, right now, the medians are bermed, and that prevents, that creates maintenance problems and also runoff issues into the roadway. So what we'll do is create a level area, which also helps with rainwater being absorbed. It's not going to sheet off like it does right now. When you're out in the medians, you can see how the runoff is just going into the roadway. So if we're able to keep it level, we're collecting a lot more water. All the concrete that's in there is going to be removed in the narrow medians, and once again, that's an issue. A couple of reasons to do that is heat island effects, so minimize that. Another is to allow water infiltration into the medians, so we're having less runoff into those areas. And we're going to build upon the existing signage system that the city has. So it's your identity, you can see there the logos, the wayfinding signs, that's going to be brought into the medians, just to, once again, as Charles talked about, reinforcing the sense of place. And then lastly is, how do we integrate some type of pedestrian barriers? So those are the baseline items that you'll see in every single design. Next, please. So what we've got is three different concepts, and they vary in terms of complexity, materials, tree plantings, and we started with, the first one is the idea of Forest City. And this one is, we try to include as many trees as possible, and we make the statement in that Millbrae is a city that you drive through, and there's this forest that you experience. It's, we'll take, there's possibilities within the narrow medians, right now, those aren't planted, but there are trees that we could get to grow in those, so these smaller trees, but the idea is that you're coming into this lush landscape. It's most cost-effective, it doesn't, the trees would be on the smaller side, which is actually preferable, that a big tree, when it gets transplanted, has a much harder time adapting to its environment than a small tree. So we'll be smaller trees, they're not going to be massive ones, they'll be heavily mulched in there, might not be able to afford ground covers and shrubs, but you'll be heavily mulched in this very strong tree canopy. And then, as you can see too, a very simple pedestrian barrier, and this is just, we're showing you a range of ideas, and this is very cost-effective. What I'd like to keep in mind is that we have almost two miles of medians, and when you start adding that all up, this can get really expensive quickly. And so we need to think creatively about cost-effective solutions, but it must bang for your buck when you're designing this. That's the first concept, and next one, slide please, it's called a place in the sun. And this one is where we're really trying to take the city's logo, identity of being a place in the sun, and how do we express that in the landscape? This would be medium costs. This is going to feature a variety of tree, different sizes and different species, more colorful plantings. It might include some deciduous trees, and just a quick fact about deciduous versus evergreen trees. Evergreen trees are better suited for here, you know, you look at the oaks, you look at the redwoods, and it's because deciduous tree wants to be watered during the summer. They're adapted to more of an eastern climate, where you get the rain during the summer. California and Mediterranean, you're going to see more evergreen. So these would be evergreen trees, they would flower throughout there. We would take the existing gateways at either end and really embellish those with a lot more plantings, more lighting, make those longer, so you, when you drive into the city, you have even more of a visual punch telling you where you are. The barriers, we'd still include, we'd have pedestrian barriers, and what we would do is an upgrade from Forest City, is that we might still have, for the long stretches, just a very simple cable barrier that's disguised more by the planting, but at the key intersections, we can incorporate, take this, your logo, that's already used out there on the street, use that as an inspiration for barriers that show this place in the sun idea. And then lighting is, once again, we'll bring this in. Forest City wouldn't include lighting, just, you know, because we're trying to keep this cost-effective, but lighting in this option would be at key intersections if you're out there. And then, next slide, please. Then, number three is, this is where we really go for it, and this would be, you know, the most expensive, but it would be, have the biggest impact, and it's really inspired by the whole vision of El Camino Real being this grand boulevard. And so this would include very trees which would get big, and they would also be larger specimens that we were planting, up to a 60-inch box, so you, when you get that big a tree, it could be 20-plus feet high, day one, when it goes in. So real big punch, visual punch at the very beginning, more of a focus on evergreen columnar trees to this, so you have, it plays off that idea of scale, really getting up tall. Planting, this would include ground covers, maybe some shrubs too, very colorful plantings too with this, to accentuate the idea of the fluid patterns. These would all be very drought tolerant, xerophytic plants too, plants that don't even want water, perfectly happy with the water they get during the winter. Lightings throughout all the trees would get lighting, there would also be, the pedestrian barriers would be another really important feature, that these would be, these could be laser-cut metal panels, it would be located throughout, there wouldn't be the cable system, it would be a real statement, and it's an opportunity to include art, and also the city's motif of the place in the sun. And then lastly, sculptures too. This one, we could commission work from artists, the sculptures could be really tall, have a lot of visual impact. So those are the three concepts. Well, I'd like to Um, what I'd like to do now is invite you down. Uh, feel free to write on these drawings. Charles and I can explain it in different intersections. We've got post-its for you to put notes on. If you wanna write on any of these drawings, please do. But we really wanna hear all of your, get a lot of feedback from you, directions.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation.
Yes.
I'm under the assumption that we all might have some questions and we were gonna get some of those fired off first, can we answer it? And then we can dive into a more interactive portion of this discussion.
Yeah.
Anyone wants to get started? I'll take a raised hand. Councilwoman Papen.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for all the hard work and effort. This is great. Uh, gives us something to work off of and, um, long overdue. My, a couple of quick questions here. So this is just the center medians.
Yes.
As we have talked about restructuring, um, putting El Camino on a diet. So is that, um, built into this? So here comes Sam.
Yes, Councilwoman, um, Papen. Uh, the question is, or the answer to the question is, we are only looking at the medians, but, you know, we did get that grant for the corridor, so we're gonna be looking at how we can beautify the size of El Camino. So, you know, it's a conservative effort, but the primary goal is to beautify our medians.
Great. Okay, and so just to stay focused here, whatever, whatever we do, um, it does involve infrastructure. So if we need to kind of play off of or build in for whatever else we do there, I hope that's possible. That would be great. Okay, um, secondarily here. Yeah, I do appreciate somehow lighting El Camino in the center because that really reflects on our city, kind of ups our game. So I do think that is important, whichever we can agree upon. I think that will be vital to, um, making this go along here. And so you said, um, no bio swells, but you did mention some type of irrigation. So in your one design, it's like everything kind of goes out towards the sidewalks? Is that throughout the whole corridor there or how does that work?
Can we go back?
Wanna bring that slide up?
Yeah, there's that.
Yeah, that one.
Right there. Okay, so what this is, is this is like you sliced through the road and this is the existing conditions. So basically, the medians are the top of the middle of the road. The water goes off to the side. We would love to be able to push the water in there. Unfortunately, that's just not the way the road was built.
So you would take the center divides, flatten them out so whatever wa- water or filtration would flow within that boundary?
So every drop of rainwater that hits that median would stay in the median.
That'd be great.
It wouldn't be pushed out onto the storm drains.
Okay, um, two more, I think, quick questions here. Big consideration here.
Yeah.
Wind sustainability.
Yes.
So, didn't see that mentioned anywhere. We're making an investment. I hope you all are aware of the gusts of wind we get. So we, we'd hate to make this huge investment and have it all over, tip, blow away. So please, uh, definitely, um, put that somewhere in the plan. And, uh, just as a note here, I'm not, not a big one on this wire fencing. I, I get it's cheap. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Um, Ms. Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, again, thank you, some great ideas. Um, I'll hold my criticism for the end. Um, the, you, you talked about, um, the fall foliage colors, which of course we all like and we're, we've been talking about trees in the neighborhoods for that. But to me, that means, um, and I always get my deciduous and my angio sperms confused. But how do you have evergreens and fall colors? Or do you intersperse the evergreens with fall color trees? So that's kind of how your drawings were. I like that idea. Um, two, I'm glad that you pointed out that, um, we have a lot of people, San Bruno, South City, all three of us, which I drive a lot now to the hospital a lot, people cutting across the median. And what South City has done is put in my hated, um, chain link fence.
Yeah.
You know, the worst of the worst is there, but I see people hopping over it all the time. So I like the ideas of the medians on there. I like the fact that, um, the laser cut has come in. I think we were supposed to get laser cut down at Gateway and instead we, I think we got, what Councilwoman Papen said was the wire instead, that maybe we'll have some plants growing up. So I think the laser cut, it's gonna have to be high enough to stop people from hopping over. And especially that some of the people that I have jumping out in front of me are, um, having mental health issues on that. So somehow that we can protect that. Um, the ground covers and the same thing with xerophytic plants that tend to be smaller, even if they're shrubs. By the time they get to that point, usually they've been trampled to death and they never get that. Um, so I don't, something to consider how we can keep them from being trampled. I would, in a perfect world, be doing the road diet that Councilwoman Papen said, so that we could expand out our entire median as we do this and possibly build up higher edges, which will allow us to keep, you know, create that swale in the middle. In fact, I had that drawing. I see we can't do that, but we could do this.
Exactly.
On there. So that was good, you got that one. Um, I hope that we can at least reach out to Caltrans and say, we've got this opportunity. We are a city that's noise impacted. And in fact, and I can't remember, I'm pretty sure I would've brought this up before, our entire length of El Camino Real and two blocks to either side are now within the county considered an equity focus area. And I'm actually working with President Biden's staff to get the CalEnviro screens to do the same data, include the same data that we did for Cal, uh, for Focus Equity for, because that'll put much more of Millbrae into that area that will make us better able to get grants or federal funding for that. So I hope we don't consider going cheap for this, that we could do what Millbrae deserves and we do it right. I think that's what we heard the last time. Um, it looks to me like the tree choices that you have are not gonna put a canopy over El Camino. So I lived in Mountain View for 18 years. They've got, uh, I can't tell you which pine tree and a couple of other species, but they do cover over El Camino, making it actually, to me, the prettiest part of El Camino Real for El Camino Real. Because the trees do that, it does lift up the asphalt, um, on occasion. Maybe that's because of the design of the median back then, but it does slow the traffic down and, on there. And there's something about trees with a canopy this way that can help do that. And the county stopped, the two counties stopped Grand Boulevard just when I finally got appointed to the Grand Boulevard Committee. I mean, my first meeting, it was gone. So, um, can we, can we, if we're not gonna get the trees and the median doing this, but we're doing the road diet, can we make sure that our sidewalks? I'd rather have more of El Camino turned into economic land, give land back to our eco, our, our commercial operations. But can we get the tree canopy that way? Especially if we're going down to four lanes instead of nine that we are in some places. So can we make sure that the two programs are working collaboratively? Ooh, I hate that word. Um, working together with each other on that. And then, um, I hear, I understand the smaller trees. I, of course, don't like killing the trees to get started. I understand that what we will end up with is a Millbrae that looks the same, so that when you cross Burlingame, which still Caltrans likes to include Millbrae into Burlingame. So once they get to that, to Murchison, it will be that consistent planning all the way through till we get to San Bruno. So we are who we are on that. So, but I don't like killing trees. So at least if we're gonna kill these trees, can we bring in, there's a brand new furniture manufacturer just in the, in there, but we cut the trees down and we reuse the lumber or we reuse them for benches throughout the city. Especially the redwoods, a couple of them to me are not doing too bad. But again, they've gotten no water and they do like water on that. Um, the eucalyptus actually have some sculptural ability, but if this is what the council decides, let's at least give these trees another life by bringing something back to the city with them. And, and I've done projects, I've worked with furniture manufacturers in California to get trees from Golden Gate Park and turn them into basically historical furniture on that. So if we can do some creative thinking about that, um, I'm not too keen on, I, I'm the big one on noise on that. I do love the birds, by the way, but you should know that before I got elected to council, um, SFO came here and had us sign an ordinance that we wouldn't feed birds in our parking lot and they don't want us to have trees and they don't want us to have birds because they perceive birds in airports as bad. So I actually love the symbolism of the birds on that, but I like the path. So I think that's kind of, ah, um, I really would like to widen those middle sections. Are we gonna also be doing pedestrian, Sam, help me, I always, pedestrian refuges on the tips out there? So that, because we're so wide at El Camino, um, me with a sprained or possibly broken ankle right now, we can't cross the street that quickly. So those, if we do that at the same time, that would be great.
Right, and Councilmember Snyder, we would be looking at those noses for refuge areas and.
Great.
You know, upgrading them.
Thank you.
When needed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Ms. Kaylin.
Good evening. Thank you so much. Um, looking at this and imagining El Camino is very exciting. Um, I had just, uh, two questions. In the areas where the median is much smaller or slimmer, are we looking at widening that or is there kind of a different design that fits in but modifies for those slimmer areas?
The geometry, as Sam would call it, uh, the curves are not gonna change.
Okay.
So we're constrained by what the existing.
Yep.
Layout of those curves are. We would love to expand those, but unfortunately, that's just not within the scope of the project.
So, some of the designs we've looked at look like they fit more the wider areas of the medians. So we'll have something that marries well with, but is a little different for those slimmer areas?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the idea is, um, it's, there are trees that will grow in those spaces and it gets into an issue of site distances though too, because those are all turning pockets.
Yeah.
And it's a liability issue for everybody. Pedestrians can't see, cars can't see other oncoming cars. So we'll have to look at that carefully, but we're gonna, you know, if you go with, you can see in most of the schemes there, we are showing trees in those small skinny areas, because that's, that's really gonna make a big impact, is the trees.
Okay. Yeah, that, you actually led into my next question, which is, there are a couple areas that are left turns with no stop sign and no light. And even in the last couple of years, there was just some plants parked in a couple, at least at one of those spots that I'm aware of, because I turn at it all the time. Um, that were, you know, the plants alone were high enough that it was really impacting visibility on that turn. So trees make me a little bit nervous there. Um, so, just kind of thinking about the turn areas, especially when there's no stop sign or no light, um, that visibility is especially important.
Yeah, there's standard site distances that the Caltrans will have too, about how close the plantings are to the ends of them. Be working with those. There won't be any shrubs in those areas for exactly that reason, it's a maintenance issue, but it's also a site distance issue. Uh, I have, the other day I was crossing and driving and I didn't see it because there were shrubs there and it's totally dangerous.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, you'd like anything? Okay, thank you. All right. Um, just a few quick ones. Um, you mentioned in your presentation, somebody existing wiring is not workable, correct? Um, so how does the current street light gets the power?
That, what I was talking to you is there's uplights. So they're little small discs like this, which are put out there to light up the trees. Those are not what's working. The cables when we were out there, they were broken, spewed all over the place, spread out all over the place. The street lighting is a separate system and that's buried below grade.
But those are okay?
Yeah, absolutely. We're not.
And those do not require replacement? It's not part of this or?
No, it's not part of the scope of this project.
I see. Okay. I, I was going to suggest perhaps looking into solar-based lighting, um, on those streetlights. Perhaps if, doesn't need to be replaced, you know, at the median, perhaps we can use it elsewhere, because I do know, um, you know, that in itself would reduce the cost of new electrical wiring, um, less work to be done and quicker installation. And, um, Peninsula Clean Energy actually have some grant funding available where we could, um, install these types of, um, solar-based lighting with batteries in it. So, um, that's certainly something we should look into. Um, I like the lighting on the tree option here and some of your, um, presentation part of it. It is particularly interesting if we look at a certain intersections, um, within downtown and closer to sort of the center part of the city, um, it'll showcase holiday spirit, which would be a great addition. Um, how does the current irrigation work? You mentioned the irrigation system is challenging.
Yeah, it's, places it's broken, yeah, it's also, it gets into the type of system it's actually used. So there's spray systems, sprayheads, so like the old-fashioned ones that pops up and the water shoots out like that. That's almost, the only time you use that now is if you're doing lawn, even for like a sports field. Um, everything else now is done by drip systems or bubblers, subsurface. And so we would, and there's actually, the state has requirements on water use that we're gonna have to comply with. So that gets into the planting design and then the type of irrigation system that we'll be using.
But the underlying pipings are okay. It's just the method of irrigation needs updating.
And unfortunately, we'd have to take everything out and just replace it because it's not, so it gets into the size of the pipe that you're using is an issue, that the pipe could be too small, that you need a bigger pipe to run it out there. It's also designed for a system where the heads pop up, whereas what we're gonna be doing is a tube that lays on the ground. You can leave the pipe in there if you wanna do that, but we're already gonna be remediating the soil, taking out the trees. And when you do all that work, you usually hit the, you know, when we were out there digging, I got a little excited with my pick and I did get right next to an irrigation line. So it's inevitable that the irrigation is gonna get damaged, the existing, um, during the construction process. And you're gonna be digging it up and it's like a remodel job. If you're gonna go in there and do the work, do it right. Just get all the stuff out that you don't, not gonna use anymore.
So I, I understand that we're still working on the recycle water design, all of it, and how to supply reclaimed recycled water. Um, but I'm under the assumption we can certainly put in the purple pipe necessary to make that work, uh, for the longevity of these projects. And obviously, we're gonna be feeding that with portable water at the moment, but until recycled water is available, then we can tie into the rest of the system to make sure that we take advantage of these recycled water.
That's correct. The drip irrigation versus normal irrigation, the, it's a point of connection where this recycled water will be, um, feeding into the irrigation system. So, um, it will, um, be serviced in the future by recycled water.
Sounds good. Okay, that's all I got. So at this point, Ms. Schneider?
Mayor, I'm sorry, could I ask a follow-up of one of your questions?
Sure.
On the electrical, I appreciate trying to save money, um, but trying to remodel an almost 100-year-old house, every time I do something, I'm finding more knob and tube. And I'm wondering, in your calculations, is there a cost savings in what the mayor suggests? Or is it actually gonna be cheaper, um, if we just redo all the electrical at the same time too? You were saying, you know, try to use some of the same stuff. Sometimes it just gets that much more complicated than running brand-new. And, and we have the advantage of knowing where it is, uh, which is another problem when you're trying to do an old house. You don't know where anything is inside the walls and I'm laughing plaster that I love. So I don't wanna do destructive testing on that. So just an idea for the calculations on that.
Right, but what I'm hearing is that the streetlights are okay. And that does not require updating nor electrical work. It's just the uplight that is, um, currently, as a focal, as a focal light for the trees and that needs to be replaced. And are we replacing that with something similar? What?
Well, we would, we replace it with the wraps that we showed you.
Okay.
So they, and what's great is.
You mean these guys here?
Yeah.
The fairy lighting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Lights like that. And what's nice about that is when those burn out, you see that they're out.
Yeah.
Because the uplights are down in the dirt and it dies, you know, it burns out.
As if there's no light.
Right, there's no light and you kinda forget about it. So fairy lights, twinkle lights, or, you know, there's all sorts of different ways of illuminating. Um, but that is readily available. And the good thing is that you have water to all the medians already, so you're not gonna have to dig up the roads to put in water service out there. You've got electrical service out there right now. And I think the flashing beacons are all solar-powered too. So there's a couple of, um, So there's a couple of, you look closer and you drive down, you'll see there are solar panels already out there attached to some of the signs. So we could explore that for the lighting, too. It's, you know, it's going to be an issue of how big a panel we're going to need because that could add up, too.
Yeah, perhaps a panel for the block and then that feeds several light, for example.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll get to that in a second. But so what is the cost consideration budget wise on these lights on the tree? Are they pretty affordable?
It's really a function of how many. And that's, you know, if you go with concept three and we've got, you know, every tree lit, that's going to be really expensive. If we decide that we're just going to do trees at the, you know, the skinny medians, those trees, these kind of gateway expressions, that's much more cost effective. The lighting is not super expensive. It's all going to be low voltage. So it's not, you know, your biggest expenses are going to be the plant material. Demolition is going to be a big cost for you.
Okay, all right. Real quick with Ms. Schneider and then we can go to the interactive section.
Again, following up on something that you said, it's funny, I never pay attention to the street lighting on El Camino Real because I'm programmed to get home then. But you did mention dark skies in the staff report, which I greatly appreciate. And I get confused and I've got a question actually out to the, the, the bird people. Of what frequency and is our, are our current street lights the frequency that's harming insect life cycles, which then in turn are harming bats and birds? So this is again, that's what dark skies, what it means is that we, we as a society move to a spectrum on the light frequency that impacts the life cycle of insects. Most of us say, yeah, fewer, yay, fewer insects. But the end result is fewer food for the birds and the bats on that. And they play a part in our society, too. So while we're looking at that, if we can go and see if we can, maybe it's the same fixture and it's just a changing. And I can't remember if it's a sodium. Remember when we all moved to sodium, something or other lights or this? I've never really done projects with that. But if we could just look into the type of light. Because the quality, the frequency, I think it's the frequency of it. And I just don't have the data.
Okay.
And then my last thing, with the fairy lights, what is really great is if you've got restaurants or businesses that are nighttime based and those fairy lights help pull things in. So if we're thinking about which trees we might want to put fairy lights on or whatever we call them, where we've got those businesses along El Camino Real or where we might have our new plaza, you know, that, that's the icing on the cake. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So we're ready to head down and getting more interactive on it? You have a comment?
Yeah, one last request is if you do get a chance, we'd really love your input to on the inspiration board right there. Resonates with you. I know it's probably kind of little abstract ideas, but it would really help us in our design direction because right now what we're showing to you is pretty basic on those boards. That one really starts to get down into the weeds and the heart of what we're after. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we forgot our hot wheels, but this gives you a representation of the whole street. So at this end, we have San Bruno. Oops, sorry, San Bruno there. And then we're all the way down to Millbrae at this point. So if you have any observations, these pens will, you can write, write on here. We'd love to get it. Or if you want to do post-its, you can do that. Or you can draw on these boards, everything you really want. And if you have any questions, too, please. These are signalized intersections and then these are the ones with the flashing beacons. We have seen people walking, you know, down the lengths of these medians, unfortunately. That's one of the things we're going to be looking at is that maybe are people coming across because there's not a crosswalk right here. But those are going to be focus areas where we're really going to have to look at putting some type of safety device.
No, this is, this was just for space saving. So it ends over there and there's a cut line, a match line, and then it continues over here. So.
That's the most northern point. This is the most southern point.
This was to avoid a 20 foot long plot. Yeah.
Okay.
And maybe, maybe the bigger idea would be looking at it as this, this first impression. This is like, this is when people are arriving and this is what they're seeing.
Mush, green, beautiful. I wanted redwood trees by our sewage treatment plant because people come to. I just brought a visitor from Australia.
Yes. Could you write that on there? Feel free. Write any comments, anything on there? And feel free to write big.
Yes, that was one of the things we were speaking with Arborist about, too, is just, yeah, like if we, if we are to replace those, what has a similar sort of effect, you know, in terms of noise pollution? And yeah, carbon capture, those are definitely two, two of the considerations there.
The, I wouldn't put them further than 30 feet on center. And so.
Yeah.
Not further than 30.
Right. Ideally, you know, if you really want an impact, you almost go to 20 feet. A lot of people, you know, you could go to 25, but it starts to feel spaced out and it doesn't have the impact that you really want. And it's kind of a day one thing, too. Day one, do you want this to feel like you've made a strong statement or did you have to kind of cut back? Right. Great. Thank you, Sam. And that's when the concepts. Yeah, but that's what the, you know, each one of those is about the cost. And some of it, you know, the Forest City, the whole idea is that we're going to get a lot of trees in there because that's really what's going to give you long term, the bang for the buck and create the character. You think of when you drive down to Palo Alto and you see these megifics and oak trees, that's their identity. Think of like the Stanford campus, you know, it's those oak trees. That's what does it for you. So the Forest City is focused on costs, but it's also what's going to give you long term bang for the buck. Then, you know, places assigned is like, how do you take that idea now and embellish it even more? So you get even more biodiversity to that, bigger trees. And then in the Grand Boulevard, you just really go for it. So I would encourage you. Focus on the trees. The trees. Really, it's going to be a strong sense of your identity.
How many trees are you thinking we can budget in? Number of trees?
We're not there yet because we haven't looked at that because we first need to know what your preferences were. Do you want us to focus on trees? Do you want us to focus on a combination of hardscape? You know, the fencing and those elements? Or do you want, you know, once again, just the trees? And.
And that was the London noise study you mentioned earlier. Yeah. Whatever that is.
Wait.
Right. Let's say, let's say, here, Mr. Mayor, here's your budget. Here's, here's, here's what we can afford.
It's true. I mean, you think about the cities like where, yeah, where you, where you want to spend your time.
Okay, so here's the story.
That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Where would you like to see sculpture? Because that, you know, I mean, that's, that's.
Sculptures are one of those things where either you can do a $5 sculpture or you can do a $5 million sculpture.
We're not.
Where, where would you see it? And then we could like find some, you know, where we can determine like, we can get like, you know.
You might want to try this.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. And with the tree species, your comment, that was good, noticing the columns. Those were just a few of the examples and that would be also absolutely, so your direction.
Yeah, yeah, we'll probably look at, I mean, it's, the scope doesn't include right now changing, cutting the medians. But we can look at that because there's a really good point to raise.
The northern entrance of the city. Give us a, 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 a candidate.
To reduce it, you need 200 feet. We don't have that land, but every little increment. So we may not get five decibels or 10 decibels, but maybe we get one and a half here and one and a half there. And humans can notice a three decimal change. So that's why they're saying, well, if it's not three decibels, don't bother doing it on that. It's frustrating because then you get in the, then we don't have to do anything. And then we get worse and worse and the planes get bigger and heavier.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments.
Any comments?
So on here, this is partly just getting a sense of scale. You know, if there's more areas that you've noticed.
Trees and then the fence. Yeah.
Feature piece sculptures, you know, lighting of trees.
It's for concept number two, it'd be a combination of this.
There's both options.
And this. So taking this, you know, these are like the gateway elements that you have already. Turning them on a side.
So this is kind of getting to downtown.
Using a combination of those. Totally unique. Yeah.
Definitely needs some sort of a barrier. That is so busy.
Okay, so it's going to be an intersection here?
Yeah. Right, put that down. The, the lazy cut panels, we could have an artist collaborate. That's just a suggestion.
Not super expensive.
So cozy. Yeah.
Yeah, they, they, they will.
Yeah, Taco Bell's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Taco Bell. That's the hotel.
Right.
That's where those.
We don't want chain light. And it should, I mean, my, my suggestion is. Yeah. Hopefully we get that. But then also, you know, what we're showing is metal. And maybe it is a softer material like wood that's out there and it's not. So if you don't mind writing that down, that would be. Sorry. What do you think? Concept three?
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. I agree. Is there anything specific you like about it or? Yeah, the metal panels. Okay. Underwater. Those are. It's, it does actually. I was just down at the Monterey Bay Aquarium and I can visualize that. Those are aloes. That would definitely make you unique. How about a giant fish? This would be what we, what I would consider xerophytic. So these are, a lot of these are succulents, they're aloes. And once these get their roots in, they don't, they're used to, they don't want the water. They're used to, they've adapted themselves to growing in these very hard environments. And some of that's just because of their, they hold water in their leaves and then their color and their width. You know, they're not big broad leaves. So they reflect light. They don't absorb it as much. So that's, I would encourage, if we do, we do go with ground covers, I would definitely encourage you in that direction. Yeah, so I've seen people go over five foot barriers. So where there's a will, there's, you know, someone's going to do it. It's going to get into a function of cost. And that's why what we did right here, we printed this out and that's one of our next things to look at, is try and figure out where people would be crossing and then amp that up, do this and make it high. So that really, and then other places we could go with something lower. We might have to switch to the cable. We might have to switch to the cable. Yeah. I'm just going to get a pen, I'll be right back.
I say incorporate sun, do you know what that means?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that was, that was my idea. Okay.
If you like abstract, if you like linear, if you like, I mean, that's important for us. Us drive through. Just trying to.
Yes. You talking about? You show me on the plan, bring my down the plan. Okay. Okay. Okay, so we have right, right in here.
This, this whole sheet. But then this whole sheet, this is the end of the middle one and this is first. This one is less pedestrian mystery crossing. And then the other thing is not here.
I just want to make sure that if there's any public who wish to make a comment on this, now is the time to raise your hand or follow a speaker's slip.
Mayor, there are no, um, hands raised online.
Thank you, Elaine. Inspiration. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to recess at 6:45 PM and then we will be back in the regular session at 7:00 PM sharp. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.